Recording in progress.
Good evening. It's the Tuesday, May 6, 2025, City Council meeting here in chambers. If you could have a roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Fahey.
Here.
Mayor Lay.
Here.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Here.
Councilmember Hefner.
Here.
Councilmember Hamlington.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Present.
All right, good. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you join me? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. The next part of the meeting is public comment on items that are not on the agenda or items that are on the consent agenda. Got a little speech that I've actually written out on this to try to maintain some continuity and clarity here. If you'd like to make public comment about an item not on the agenda or about an item on the consent agenda, or want to make a public comment later regarding items that are on the agenda and have a public comment, period, please fill out a written card, which you can find right outside of council chambers, give it to clerk at the end of the dice, and she will call your name when it's time to come up and speak. When you come to the podium, please state your name and where you live. You don't have to give us an address, but the city where you reside in. There's a timer on the screen behind me, I do believe, and you have up to three minutes to speak. Or if there is one or more other people in the council chambers or online who are willing to pool their time with you, you can speak up to six minutes. You don't have to speak for the full three minutes. You don't have to speak for the full six minutes, but you have that time. If you hear somebody who makes the same point as you do, but we really like to say that you support that, there's nothing wrong with coming up and saying ditto. There are people who do that. Or if they disagree completely with the point, and other people have covered that, that's fine to say that you disagree completely with that point as well. As to public comments on items not on the agenda, council members will not be responding because the item is not on the agenda. The same is true regarding items on consent agenda, which are not subject to public comment unless council member or council members want to place it on the regular agenda. One final thing is that we want wide participation here, and so we would appreciate if you'd refrain from clapping, or booing, or stomping your feet, or whatnot during the comments and in between, so that people feel comfortable coming forward and speaking, which is a real intimidating thing for a lot of people, not because of us, but because of just speaking in public generally. So with that, do we have any public comments on items not on the agenda?
Up first is Catherine Smith, followed by Tamara Krantz.
Okay, all right, thanks. I'm Catherine Smith. I'm a resident of Ward 3, and I'm going to say that I know that I made a hard ask, that asking you to take the award of the Pro's contract off of the consent agenda is a hard thing for you to do, but I think it's an important thing for you to do, and that's why I'm here tonight. I know that sometimes you have items before you that can be fixed after the fact, but I think there are a lot of things here that need to be fixed now and can't be fixed later. So what can't vigilance fix? Vigilance can't fix the allocation of expenses. And what we're trying to do here is there's a historical pattern of using the open space as a slush fund to fund the expenses of other divisions. And what we have from the staff in the latest memo in response to your request for clarification of the allocation is an explanation of where the money comes from. But where the money comes from is not a justification for how the money is going to be spent. Once it is open spaces money, it should be spent on open space. Vigilance can't fix a trails plan that has been formed on an incorrect foundational basis. We need to know where the good habitat is, where the species of special concern are living, where are the wildflowers, and once we know that, we can decide where our trails belong. We are obligated under our city charter to use good stewardship, and the right foundation is what we need in order to have good stewardship of our open space. Vigilance can't fix any of the contractual drafting issues. Importantly, there is no defined deliverable for open space, which pretty much means that whatever the consultant gives you is what you're going to live with, because you haven't spelled out what it is you're expecting. The contract doesn't say what the subcontractor ERO will do, so again, whatever they do is going to be okay. The contract doesn't even say that DTJ has to use ERO, and that was a precondition of open spaces agreeing to this particular setup. So why are we setting up a conflict for the future when with very few, expending very few resources now, we could fix something that's going to become a burgeoning and consistent problem? The best course of action is for you to give the staff guidance, have them return at the May 20 meeting, and let's get this done. If there's something that you want LOSA to do, we are more than happy to do it. We're available to meet with the staff. We'd be happy to do that. Thank you.
Up next is Tamara Krantz, followed by Matt Jones.
Hi, this is Tamara Krantz. Hope you can hear me. I live in Lewisville, and I've got just two comments that are not on the agenda. The first thing is, I wanted to ask you if you could do everything in your power to purchase the property at 96th and Dillon. It was on the map of the Open Space Advisory Board Recommended Candidate Properties for Acquisition, and it's bordered on three sides by other open space properties, so that would make it really, really important for habitat connectivity. So I hope you are already considering that. And then I wanted to, my second comment is, I wanted to reiterate what Catherine just said, and ask you to please take the Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Department Long Range Plan and Trails Master Plan Contract off of your consent agenda. I'll say, I did get, I read the packet. I'm really happy about a lot of the things the plan includes. I'm very happy that it includes community engagement, especially a statistically valid survey, but I completely agree with what Catherine Smith just said, that it's not going to lead to an open space management plan. As you know, our open space management plan was last updated in 2004, and we really are in need of having this done. And just to point out, I don't know if Catherine said this, but reminding you to look at the exclusions, it specifically excludes an open space wildlife, natural resources, archaeological and habitat inventory, and site-specific management and maintenance plans, and it specifically excludes field ecological inventory or open space management plan. And it excludes native prairie restoration plans and procedures. All of those things that are excluded, I think we really need, and I don't understand the intricacies of how this would be subcontracted, but please direct staff to add those things back in or take it off the agenda if that's necessary. Thanks for considering my comment.
Thank you, Tamara.
Next up is Matt Jones, followed by James Williams.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me? My name is Matt Jones. I live in a very green and damp Dutch Creek in, what's that, Ward 3, mighty Ward 3. I want to talk to you first about the Schreider property, pursuing that. That is a key open space property. I'm hoping that you'll be very active in trying to have that happen, working with the county, which I'm told is also involved, but that's point number one. The second one has to do with the Parks, Recreation, and Open Space and the Trails Plan. And I hope you look at Catherine's letter very closely. I think she nailed it. It does a really nice job of describing the concerns that I have. And I'm going to talk from kind of a high level. I used to be an environmental planner, did it for 18 years at City Boulder Open Space and Mountain Parks, and what I see are two problems coming at you. If you don't have staff, go back and make this thing more specific, especially on the environmental side, the ecological side, I think there will be poor decisions that get made on both the Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Plan and the Trails Plan, and that will cause issues down the road. Next, you know, we're talking about doing an open space plan later. It's the master plan. It's going to be hard to overrule what's in it, and so you need to get this right, in my opinion. The second thing is, when those decisions get made, I think it will cause conflict in the community, needless conflict. I just think it's better to have all this information in hand and have staff and council and public understand what the consultant is going to do, clearly understand it. It gives you a good idea about it, but from an environmental perspective, it's very lacking in my mind, and I used to do that kind of contracting. And I guess, I bet I know what you're thinking. Oh, gosh, we sent this back to staff. We should probably get on with it. I agree, we should get on with it, but you're going to spend more time, and there'll be more conflict in the community, if you don't do the thing right in the first place. And you asked staff to do that. I was disappointed. There were some changes in the memo, but I was disappointed in how little it had changed, and how little specifics ERO, the environmental consultant, had in the contract. You don't know what they're doing. I don't know what they're doing. Staff, I assume might have more knowledge of what they're doing, but it's not written down. And clear agreements make clear friends, right? That's what we need to be having here. Can you please ask staff to redo the memo so that it is explicit and we have a smooth process where we can constructively figure out what we need to do to these projects, both in the Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Plan and the Trails Plan? I'm real concerned about the Trails Plan. You don't put the environmental stuff in there. You don't, you can't do your constraint planning, and you'll put trails in places that shouldn't be ecologically. So thanks for your time.
Thanks, Matt.
Next up is James Williams.
Hello, James Williams, 1899 Garfield Avenue, Ward 1. Mr. Mayor, council members, thanks for having public comment. Always appreciate it. I provided a couple pieces of paper to the clerk for your review, and I'll talk about what that is. I'm here in support of underpasses and pedestrian bicycle infrastructure throughout the city, and particularly in Ward 1. I have, I've been really pleased to see a lot of the planning come along through the South Boulder Road Transportation Plan and Identification of Potential Underpasses there. From that plan, there was a couple of underpasses identified near Villa Appia and near Main Street. The least cost underpass is at South Boulder Road, just east of Villa Appia, of which I'm very interested in seeing that move forward. It's perfect connectivity with the existing trails and Cottonwood Park and the church property there. Not only an opportunity for an underpass, but an opportunity for further infrastructure improvements across the area, additional connectivity into some of the businesses and/or bike paths to move from that underpass to get our citizens safely around, safely around Lewisville. My daughter's in sixth grade. She, I live on the north side of South Boulder Road. She crosses South Boulder Road every day to go to OMS, and South Boulder Road has more cars than I think any sort of central roadway in Lewisville, where there's a lot of residences, and I think safety is very important here, in addition to the great connectivity that that would provide. What I presented to you here is a resolution that I prepared that I was circulating with folks in Ward 1 and folks that used Cottonwood Park and other areas. This resolution is in support of that underpass pass at Villa Appia and additional infrastructure improvement. I have about 50 signatures so far. Didn't provide them, but can show you them here. And the general feedback that I've gotten as I've requested participation from citizens of Lewisville is a lot of support, a lot of, that makes, that makes sense. South Boulder Road is equivalent to, you know, the Lewisville Boulder Turnpike. Cars go so fast through there. It would be great if there was a way in this, in the central area of Lewisville to cross that, that main artery. Do it safely and allow for the connectivity of the great parks that we have, the great trails that we have to the north of South Boulder Road. It would create, you know, I think, a more vibrant community in that area because of the walkability and the bicycling that it would provide. I really appreciate the time today and hope you'll consider this as you continue to plan for the rest of the year. I think it would be great to put this on, something like this on the ballot, as we've done previously. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion for approval of consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Council informational comments and committee reports is the next item. Yes, Councilmember Fahey.
Yes, I just wanted to mention an article that I read in the Boulder Daily Camera. Jay Kalinsky wrote about a group called Niche.com that does research across the country, looking at communities and the quality of their schools, the outdoor activities, and commute times. They found for 2025 that Boulder County was named the number one best county to live in Colorado, and that was, they were number 137 out of 3,164 counties countrywide that they evaluated. And within that, Boulder County being number one, City of Lewisville was the number one city in Boulder County. So, yes, go us, right? And it was all because of the quality of life, the schools, public schools, family friendliness, outdoor activities, health and fitness, and nightlife. So, we're doing okay. That's all.
I have one. There was some question whether Lewisville was going to be part of the Monarch High School graduation parade, which celebrates the graduates from the high school, many of whom come from Lewisville, some come from Superior. Thank you very much to our city manager and working with a couple of other folks in the city, including the chief police, and we are back in the parade, and there are a variety of places where you can find the map, but it's probably a little too small to show, but we'll make sure to have this up, I think, on the website or somewhere. And I know we've been posting it on Facebook and social media, but it's 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. next Saturday, May 10. And we dropped some flyers over the weekend on the parade route to let people know, the ones that I dropped, people were really enthusiastic and are going to be out in force. So if you get a chance to do it, it's actually really fun, and I think the students will be very safe this year in what they do in the vehicles as they're going, so, and it'll be a lot of fun. So I wanted to mention that. Anybody else have any informational comments? Yes?
Just give a brief one on behalf of Councilor Kern and myself on the Airport Task Force, which is the Boulder County and Superior lawsuit against Rocky Mountain Airport was dismissed in the trial court, I think for jurisdictional reasons, and I understand that the town of Superior is considering an appeal.
I think they actually now have appealed.
Have appealed, have filed an appeal.
All right. City manager's report.
Yes, thank you. I know that we are about to do six proclamations, but there's more for May. So Public Service Recognition Week is May 4 through 10. Professional Municipal Clerks Week is May 4 through 10. National Police Week is May 15 through 21. May is Mental Health Awareness Month. And in terms of upcoming events and programs, May 10, we have the Ranger Mystery Party. May 10 is Lewisville's partnering with Lafayette and Superior for an Electrification Expo at the Superior Community Center. May 10, there's also a Rain Barrel Workshop at the Recreation Center. At the library, there are Storytime Sessions with Opera Colorado. May 14 is the Historic Preservation Landmark Plaque Ceremony and Walking Tour at 6:00 p.m. at the Historical Museum. May 17 is Blooming Senior's Plant Sale at 8:00 a.m., Native Plant Walk at 8:30, Historical Museum Tour of Lost Lewisville at 10:00 a.m. May 18 is an adaptive bike ride session on the Davidson Mesa at 10, 11, and 12. And then, we must say this, May 19 is Celebrate Elected Officials Day. So, thank you.
No comment. All right. Thank you very much, City Manager. We do have a number of proclamations, and we're going to go through each of them tonight. And the first one is the Older Americans Month proclamation, I believe. Councilmember Fahey is going to read that for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes. Whereas May is nationally recognized as Older Americans Month, providing an opportunity to celebrate the resilience, independence, and diverse experiences of older adults. And whereas the City of Lewisville recognizes the immeasurable contributions of older adults in our community, whose wisdom, experience, and dedication continue to shape and enrich our city, and whereas older residents of Lewisville are redefining aging by engaging in lifelong learning, civic participation, intergenerational mentorship, excuse me, and active lifestyles that inspire our entire community. And whereas the 2025 national theme "Flip the Script" challenges outdated stereotypes about aging, showcasing the strength, vitality, and evolving roles of older adults in our society. And whereas the City of Lewisville is committed to fostering an inclusive and supportive environment that values and empowers older adults, ensuring access to services, programs, and opportunities that promote their well-being and full participation in community life. And now, therefore, we, the Lewisville City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2025 to be Older Americans Month. We encourage every resident to recognize and celebrate the diverse contribution of older adults in our community -- excuse me -- by embracing the spirit of "Flip the Script."
Great. We have a motion. Would you like to make a motion, or would you like to defer? All right, I'll move that we approve the proclamation.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, one we have before us is the Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islanders Heritage Month proclamation, and I believe Councilmember Kern is going to read that to us.
Thank you. First, it's a privilege to proclaim this on behalf of the City of Lewisville, especially since for the last three weeks I have had laryngitis and couldn't speak. So this is kind of fun for me, actually. So Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month 2025 proclamation. Whereas, observe during the month of May, Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month celebrates the people, cultures, achievements, and contributions of Asian Americans, Pacific Islander Americans, and Native Hawaiians. And whereas, the observance began in 1979 as Asian Pacific Heritage Week, which was expanded in 1992 by President George H.W. Bush to a month-long celebration, rightly so. And whereas, Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders are the fastest-growing racial group in the United States and includes cultures from East, Southeast, and South Asia, the Pacific Islands, and Hawaii. And whereas, we recognize the significant contributions to many facets of American culture and society, including science, medicine, literature, art, sports, government, activism, and law. And whereas, we value inclusivity, racial equality, and our shared responsibility to honor the history, traditions, and involvement of Asian American, Pacific Islander Americans, and Native Hawaiians in our history. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Lewisville does hereby proclaim May 2025 as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Thank you.
Thanks. Would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I move that we approve the proclamation for Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month 2025.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Wait for Councilmember Fahey. Any opposed? Okay. Next is the Historic Preservation Month proclamation. Did I miss?
Jumped over one, didn't I?
Jewish American Heritage Month proclamation. Josh Cooperman?
All right. Whereas, since first arriving in the 1600s, Jewish Americans have played a vital role in shaping the cultural, economic, scientific, and social landscape of the United States. And whereas, Jewish American Heritage Week was first celebrated in 1980 and extended to the month of May by President George W. Bush in 2006. And whereas, Jewish Americans have made significant contributions to science, medicine, engineering, journalism, the arts, and in public service, including the nation's highest court. And whereas, in addition to celebrating the contributions of Jewish Americans, it is also a time to honor their resilience in the face of discrimination and genocide. And whereas, the celebration of Jewish American Heritage Month also serves to combat antisemitism by promoting understanding and appreciation of Jewish American culture. And now, therefore, we, the Lewisville City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Jewish American Heritage Month in the City of Lewisville. I move that we approve the proclamation for Jewish American Heritage Month.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now we're ready for the Historic Preservation Month proclamation. I think Councilmember Hamlington is going to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas, the 1966 National Historic Preservation Act established the national registration of historic places and state historic preservation offices. And whereas, in May 1973, National Preservation Week was established, which grew to historic whereas, in May 1973, National Preservation Week was established, which grew to Historic Preservation Month in 2005. And whereas, local historic preservation revitalizes neighborhoods, promotes economic, social, and environmental sustainability, and maintains community character while improving livability. And whereas, it is important to celebrate history and the significant contributions made by the diverse residents and cultures that came before us to build this community into what it is today. Whereas, the city of Louisville is proud to have 53 historic homes and 15 historic commercial properties that celebrate our past and are preserved for future generations. And now, therefore, we, the Louisville City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Historic Preservation Month in the city of Louisville. I move that we approve Historic Preservation Month proclamation.
Second.
Any opposed? All right. Next is the Small Business Week proclamation. I believe Mayor Porton Dickinson is going to read that for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm excited to get to read this as a small business owner myself in this community. So Louisville's, sorry, whereas, Louisville's economy is driven by small businesses who take risks and invest in our community. And whereas, 70% of Louisville's businesses have less than five employees, and 98% of Louisville businesses have less than 100 employees. And whereas, small business owners contribute to the fabric of Louisville's small-town feel. And whereas, small businesses work to grow the local economy and keep dollars circulating in Louisville. And whereas, National Small Business Week has been celebrated by the Small Business Administration across the nation since 1963 to highlight the programs and resources available to entrepreneurs and small businesses. And whereas, Louisville works with and takes pride in our small businesses and celebrates their wins as the big impacts that they are. And whereas, the city of Louisville supports small businesses and supports efforts to help and elevate small businesses in Louisville as they open, grow their businesses, create jobs, and add continued vibrancy to Louisville. And now, therefore, the City Council of Louisville, Colorado, does hereby proclaim May 5th through 9th of 2025 to be Small Business Week. And with that, I move that we approve the Small Business Week proclamation.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next is the Economic Development Week proclamation. Economic Development Week is May 12th through the 16th. That is to say, next week. Whereas, economic development professionals are committed to creating, retaining, and expanding top-tier opportunities that facilitate long-term equitable community growth. And whereas, the economic development profession cultivates thriving neighborhoods, champions sustainability and resiliency, boosts economic prosperity, enhances quality of life, and builds robust tax bases. And whereas, economic development professionals operate throughout diverse economic environments, including rural, suburban, and urban settings, local, state, provincial, and national governments, public-private partnerships, chambers of comments, commerce institutions of higher education, among many similar organizations and associations. And whereas, economic development professionals serve as stewards, building, bridging connections between community stakeholders such as residents, business leaders, elected officials, industry executives, educational administrations, to collaborate in promoting job creation, community success, infrastructure advancements, and an optimistic future. And whereas, economic developers continue to the betterment, contribute to the betterment and progress of Louisville, Boulder County, and Colorado. And whereas, an expanded incentive program was adopted in early 2025. Staff conducted over 30 formal retention visits and 30 and 50 business attraction activities in 2024. Fifty-five new businesses joined Louisville in 2024, and staff continues ongoing site selection searches and responses. And whereas, Louisville has over 18,000 employees and 1,200 businesses. Now, therefore, the City Council of Louisville, Colorado, does hereby proclaim May 12th through the 16th, 2025, to be Economic Development Week. And I move to proclaim Economic Development Week, May 12th through the 16th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right. Thank you very much. Our next item is ordinance number 1895, series 2025, Contractor Insurance Requirement Amendment, First Reading. We are going to begin doing a little bit more on first reading than we have done in the past frequently. It's just to set the public hearing. But there's going to be a staff presentation, and then we'll set a vote to set the public hearing, if council chooses.
So, through the mayor, if I could just explain the process change?
Please.
And so, with the past practice has been that there's a first reading in which there's not a presentation by council, and then the public hearing is set, and then during the second reading is when there's a presentation by staff, and there's more discussion. And so, we're changing the process so that staff does a presentation as part of the first reading to not only introduce the topic to council, but then also to the public. That then provides the two weeks in between the first reading and the second reading for staff or the public to ask additional questions, council to get clarification. Or if something just really strikes council as wrong as part of the first reading, we can go back to the drawing board without setting the public hearing as part of the second reading. And so, this is the first time implementing this process tonight. We look forward to council feedback as we continue to do this. And with that, Rob?
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of City Council, Rob Zucaro, Community Development Director. I'm gonna be presenting on this item. So, this is an ordinance, again, for first reading and setting the public hearing for May 20th. So I'll give an overview of the proposal. So, the city began, I believe, contractor licensing in 2016. The ordinance that we have now that dictates how we do contractor licensing was last updated in 2013. It was kind of a wholesale change to the ordinance, it looked like. There are some proposed amendments that staff has initiated that we would, we think will improve our licensing process and our inspection processes as well. So, the proposal includes allowing that the city verify, for the city to verify that contractors hold general liability insurance. Right now, our ordinance says that when you apply for a contractor license, you have to attest when you sign, but it doesn't say anything beyond that. We've actually had some instances, or an instance, where there was a question about insurance, and we just figured out we didn't have the ability to simply request proof of insurance. So that was kind of the impetus. So when we got into it, we, there were some more improvements to the ordinance that we wanted to make. We are wanting to update the licensing test requirements to the 2018 code series or better. We have a provision in there that would, that our building inspectors or our building official could require that a licensed supervisor. So, there's a category that if you are, for example, an electrical contractor, and you have several electricians working for you, you have to assign a supervisor. Some of those electricians may be of varying qualifications, so it's important to have a supervisor. If the city deems it necessary, we would like to have the ability to require that supervisor onsite for inspections. Require that all state licensed electrical and plumbing contractors have their license onsite with them. This is actually a state requirement. They're asking us to verify when we're doing inspections, so we thought it'd be good to reiterate it within this code. And then, the last thing is to authorize the building official to issue stop-work orders if there is a violation of the licensing requirements. If there's ongoing licensing issues, we have the ability to have a hearing with our Building Code Board of Appeals. They can actually revoke licenses and take other actions if there's repeated violations. But we would also like the ability to issue a stop-work order for more minor issues until they're resolved. So that's a summary of the proposed changes, and we're recommending approval on first reading and setting the public hearing for May 20th, 6:00 p.m.
Thank you, Director. One thing that I would encourage both council and anybody in the public to do is to provide any questions to staff in the time between now and the time of the public hearing, get any clarifications that we can. If there's anything that requests staff to bring back any supplemental materials, please do that. So I move that ordinance, oop, do we have?
Sorry.
Go ahead. Should we do that now, or should we do that? If you have something right now to request, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, so there is one thing I would, I would really like us to add to this, update of our licensing. And that is, I'd really like to see some kind of requirement for education or training around heat pump and heat pump hot water heater installations. I can be more specific if that would be helpful.
Right. So I think at this point, we'll take questions or requests. I don't know if it's appropriate to recommend amendments to the ordinance at this time?
I think it's just requests for additional information, it may be.
So, for example, I could bring back information on our peer cities, if either any of them have similar requirements within their licensing standards? Or are you looking for something different, Councilmember Cooperman?
I mean, I haven't looked extensively about what other cities are doing, a little bit. I mean, I don't know. I guess what I'm asking for would be an amendment technically to what's, what's in the.
I think the time for amendment will be at the public hearing. If there's particular information you want, that's a different story. Go ahead, Council, Mayor Porton.
Yeah, I think this is, this is new for us, right, to have any, any discussion at all, questions during first reading. And so I think, you know, maybe, maybe the idea is be prepared for possibly that issue coming up when we have our second reading and what the, you know, how that would or not be an appropriate amendment. So we have some time to think about that. And the only one I would add is, just a curiosity, maybe you can answer just today, is you said that, you know, contractors would be expected to be up to date on at least, up at least the 2018 code. Since we have a 2021 code in place, why wouldn't they be required to be up to date to the, to the current code that we're implementing?
Right. So I think it's the testing standard that they have to meet. It's 28, it says 2018 or later. So, I think the intent is that, you know, we could change that language potentially, if this is an issue, just to say the, the most recent version of the code that the city has adopted, for example. So I don't have a good reason for that. This was something our building official had wanted to update.
Yeah. And I, of course, I have no idea, like, how long it takes or how quickly it'll be implemented. I can imagine a thing where we pass the 2024 code, and if we have something in, in this that says you have to be, you know, updated with our most recent code, and they haven't had a chance to take a test, they haven't had, like, I could see there being a problem. So maybe the, you know, not quite the most recent, but the, like, so if there's reason for that, I would be curious if what.
Yeah, let me get a better answer for you for second reading
That'd be great.
From our building official, Mr. Root.
Thanks.
All right. Do we?
More.
I think, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. First, I mean, I think this is great to actually use the first reading opportunity to, to do something. I just want to read briefly from our code about what we're supposed to do on first reading, which is, after the first reading, the council shall vote to amend, adopt, or reject the ordinance, or take such other action as it deems appropriate. And so I, I think at least as, you know, our code envisions this process, this is a substantive discussion, and we may well talk about it and decide to ask for, you know, particular amendments to come back the next time, or, you know, I like other such action as it deems appropriate. I mean, I think that leaves the door pretty open for the kinds of things that I think Josh was raising. Certainly, Rob and I, you and I exchanged an email about, I had two questions, one of which was, you know, right now, we have this sort of check-the-box thing, I have insurance. And this would allow city staff to come back and say, okay, well, you checked the box, where's your insurance? And my first question was, well, if we're gonna have them check the box, why not also have them actually attach their certificate of insurance when they come in and apply? And then again, when they ask for renewal? And maybe Rob will want to share his answer on that. And then my second question was, is there any particular amount of insurance that we require? I think the answer to that is, is no. But I sort of have a question, like, should, should we set the amount, right? Like, in commercial contracts, you often say you have to have $2 million of insurance, or $5 million of insurance. And so, again, if the city is in the business of requiring insurance, should we be setting some minimum floor, or just leave it up to the contractors and assume they're gonna pick a number that's right for them and their clients? Rob, do you want to weigh in on those?
Yeah. So, yeah, I think that's a really good question. We don't have an amount in our code. Some cities do. I think it's very common for the general contractor to have a million for an individual incident, and then 2 million aggregate, just from a quick review of ordinances. Single-trade contractors, it's often less than that. So I think if council wanted to put in minimums, we could put in minimums in the code. It's something that a lot of cities do, I believe. You know, the reason we just have, and again, this goes back to the 2013 code, I'm assuming they did it. I could see the benefit of just having an applicant attest, is that it's, it's just less of an administrative burden for the city to not have to maintain those records, verify the records unless a question or issue arises. So that's probably the best reason. It doesn't mean we have to do it that way. Certainly, if, you know, the purpose of our contractor licensing, I would say, just to back up a little bit, is, you know, this is to protect homeowners, business owners, property owners, to make sure that contractors meet minimum technical qualifications, but also have insurance, because that's also gonna protect our residents and business owners and property owners. So I think it fits within the intent of the ordinance, to verify they have minimum amounts, and to actually verify they have the insurance. It's, you know, it's something that, again, the, just as pros and cons, the con would be it's just additional work, administrative burden for staff. So we're, again, we're always trying to weigh that balance.
That makes a lot of sense. I just want to, like, just stepping through, like, if we adopted this as-is, a contractor comes and gets licensed, they check the box, the situation doesn't arise where we ask them to prove they have insurance, it turns out they don't have insurance, and, you know, they burn somebody's house down, or, you know, whatever bad thing. The homeowner in that situation is, is gonna say, right, Louisville, you licensed this person, and they never had insurance. And we're gonna say, well, they checked the box. I mean, is that, and I don't mean that to make fun of anybody, but like, is that how the conversation goes?
We've never been in that situation. I don't know that the conversation would go exactly like that, but, you know, if the city would have some liability in that instance. Again, I think there's lots of good reasons to require it. I think it's, we'll take council direction on that. If council wants to add minimums, I'm happy to bring back minimums to the second reading for that. So I think, again, process-wise, this is a new process. If it's appropriate to direct amendments, then this is an amendment we could bring back, if we get that direction from council.
I'm gonna call a very quick timeout to ask our city attorney whether, if we do amend tonight, and I appreciate your calling out that provision, if that is, in fact, what we have to do, does that mean we have to renotice it and all that, or not?
No. What I would recommend is that you give some direction about the types of amendments that you would like to see. We can then take some time to draft. We can look at, you know, other jurisdictions and give you some background on how others are addressing the issues. What we want to avoid through this process is actually amending from the DIES. So we'll bring it back to you with second reading amendments. You've seen those before. We put them in, like, bold strikeout and bold double underline, so they look different than the original amendments that this ordinance contains. And that'll, I think, give us the ability to really draft amendments that will cover what you want and that, you know, we think are the best, are stated the best way in the ordinance.
Thank you. That's, that is a relief that we don't. That's, that is a relief that we don't have to draft from the dais. Anytime we can avoid that, the better. So, one more, and then I want to come back to Josh.
We'll go back.
And I'll come back to Councilmember Hefner as well. Go ahead.
Thank you for bringing up the minimums and for the, for the kind of coverage. That was one of the questions that I had was, are we going to be, is it going to be fluid? Is it going to be based on, like, the value of the project that they have to determine the liability so that the city doesn't have liability if the insurance isn't adequate? You know, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, so I don't think the city is going to have any liability by running this licensing program. I think that having a, I don't, I would definitely not recommend doing it by project and having a tiered amount. I think having, for example, you know, the $1 million for a single incident and then 2 million aggregate seems to be very common. I'll confirm that before second reading. But my recommendation is to have for general contractors, one requirement, for single trade contractors, probably a different requirement, and we would come back with a proposal on that.
Okay. And I, I also agree. I'd like, like to see in general if it's possible to add into this, instead of just plumbing and electrical, the HVAC industry, and what standards there are for their certifications, licensing, insurance, that kind of thing.
So I didn't, I didn't mention it, but in the draft, there is a requirement for licensing for rate, for raiders, energy raiders. That's something that we haven't had in the past, is something for energy raiders, just to make sure they have minimum, we're going to make sure they get a license with the city. So, and then if I could go back to Councilmember Cooperman's question, I think it goes back to, and, and I may not have fully understood it, but I think the, our licensing requirements, again, are to make sure that contractors have minimum qualifications for pretty standardized testing that most contractors have across the board. If there was a minimum, you know, a testing standard or a qualification for HVAC doing electric, but I think you were asking about training, like, making mandatory training, which would, I would just say, I don't know that that fits with the typical intent of a licensing program to require training, but I'd be open to see what council's desires are on that.
It sounds like we have, I think we're going to have to do this formally with a motion and then include these two things, but it's, what I'm hearing is, one, we have an interest in having an amendment related to insurance minimums that is based on best practice. We'll have maybe, and other similar communities experience, and then we'll have an opportunity on cycle reading to massage and, and, and vote on that. That's one thing that I hear. And then the second thing is the, the issue that was brought up by Councilmember Cooperman, which is requiring both, what, training, to be, to, to sign off on training, or is that?
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't, I think my idea is, this, it would be the same sort of trainings that we require for, you know, the, the certifications that we do provide already. So, you know, the, the same sort of testing or whatever that a contractor would get for other certifications, just for, specifically for heat pump installations and heat pump hot water installation, hot water heater installations.
So to be clear, we, we don't require training. They, there's tests that, that different contractors can take that are standardized to qualify for different things. I don't know that there's a specific qualification for heat pump contractors, but we can, we can research it, and if there is a specific certification, then we could require that for heat pump contractors, that anybody who's a, who is installing a heat pump, we would then require that they have a certification, if one exists, that is specific to that technology. Is that in line with what you're requesting?
Yeah, or at least in part. So the, the one I do know about is Excel. They have a requirement for contractors who get rebates for heat pump installations, they have to be, have to meet certain requirements with Excel. And so they have a little thing about what testing requirements those contractors have to meet. That's the one I'm currently aware of. I, I'm actually interested in something a little bit more, which is something that I'm hoping would sort of push contractors who do not currently do heat pump installations to learn how to do that, essentially. And so I'm wondering if we can do something in our licensing that would help to push other contractors to get certified to do heat pump installations.
So I think what I'm, what I'm taking away from that is anybody who's getting a mechanical contractor license would have, regardless of if they're installing heat pump systems, would have to demonstrate either a certain training or a certain testing for heat pumps, is what you're proposing. So I think, I think if council as a whole wanted us to either research that or research it further and come back with a potential amendment in alignment with that, then we would be seeking council's direction on that.
One clarification on that. I mean, isn't it possible to say if they are planning to do a certain kind of work, they need to, I mean, could you limit it to the particular kind of work that might get you into doing heat pump installation? I mean, I, you know, I, I understand what you're saying, is to have a whole permitting process that had, that required everybody to do exactly the same thing. That's one thing, but.
Well, I think we could do it either way. I'm just trying to reflect what I'm hearing Councilmember Cooperman say.
Yeah, I'm inclined, I mean, one of the things, this is new to all of us doing it this way. I don't, I'm wary of getting too much into the weeds, but I really would like to frankly sort of move the discussion along and maybe permit or, or suggest that those, you know, the, the amendments that we're talking about, offering tonight, be drafted, and then we can come back for a more fulsome discussion later on. We could easily say no, vote on each one of them as is, but I, we're going to spend most of the evening on this if we get too much further down the road of drafting language.
So through the mayor?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that we stay focused on what the intent of this ordinance modification is, and it's really to make sure that there's proof of insurance for contractors in regards to Councilman Cooperman's request. I view that as a different topic from the ordinance that's before you tonight, and if council would like us to evaluate that, we can, we can most definitely do that. I would just suggest that that be a separate path than this ordinance that we're proposing.
I see quite a number of nods of the head, but I don't see Councilmember Cooperman's nod of the head yet. Could we put that to a future date? We work through the issue that you're raising?
Yes, we could. I guess, you know, the, when I, when I looked at the agenda, it doesn't, doesn't specify insurance in the title, so I, although it does in the printed one that's on the, on the dais. So I was just thinking more generally about possible updates to our contractor licensing, and this is one that I'm interested in. I'm, I'm happy to, to separate it, yeah. But I would like to have a discussion about it.
Councilmember Hallington?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I too would love to see more contractors being educated and being able to provide, you know, some of these more sustainable building practices. I don't think this particular ordinance is the best way to try and push and make momentum in that direction. So I would like to focus with where we're at right now and maybe think of other ways to try to change practices and, and really try to move the needle forward in adoption of those practices outside of our ordinance, regardless of what the title is. I just don't think it fits in, in what we're doing right now.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yeah, thanks. I just, I just wanted to add to your recap, Mayor, the, on second reading, I was proposing consideration of minimums, as well as do we require a certificate of insurance at the time of application or renewal?
If there's no further discussion, I would move to set a public hearing on ordinance number 18, or ordinance number 1895, series 2025, contracting insurance requirement amendment, amendment, as Councilmember Hefner has ebly suggested. Do we have a second?
Mayor, before you call for a second, and is your motion also to adopt it on first reading, the ordinance before you? You made a motion to set a public hearing.
I'm sorry. Yeah, it's, I'm not even accustomed to thinking about how I do it reflexively on, in other matters. It's sort of all in favor of the, of the item, so yes, it's to, to approve it on first reading.
Thank you.
And set a public hearing, subject to the additional amendment suggested by Councilmember Hefner.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, we made it. I think, all right. And the next item is disaster preparedness and emergency response, and we have a presentation from our new city manager.
Thank you. I'm just going to get settled here for a moment. All right, so thank you. So I'm Diana Langley, city manager. So within the first few weeks of, this is my sixth week on the job, within the first few weeks of starting the job, I met with quite a few members of the community, including Sheriff Johnson, Chief Wilson, Director Mike Chard of Boulder ODM, residents, and I appreciate residents being here tonight, and a variety of people. And, you know, the common theme that I heard from those meetings was that Louisville needs to join Boulder Office of Disaster Management. And so the, the presentation tonight focuses on a recommendation to initiate discussions with Boulder ODM, also to direct staff to prepare a request for proposals for the preparation of an emergency operations plan, and then go through all of the resources that have been completed for Louisville to develop a comprehensive prioritized list of improvements and mitigation measures, so that as grant opportunities or other project opportunities come up, that we have the ability to pull from a list that's been assimilated from all of these different documents, and it's not trying to search through various things, and then also making sure that we have alignment. So the Boulder Office of Disaster Management was first formed under a different name in 2005. It includes Boulder County and the City of Boulder for the delivery of disaster services. The mission focuses on disaster management through community preparedness, mitigation of hazards, and effective disaster response and recovery. ODM has a highly skilled and dedicated team led by Mike Chard, and then the Board of Director consists of the sheriff, the Boulder Police Chief, Boulder Fire Rescue Chief, Boulder County Administrator, and then City of Boulder City Manager. Here's a timeline. I know the font is small, but this shows Louisville's emergency preparedness disaster management resources. So going back to 2009, a continuity of operations plan, 2012, an emergency operations plan, and then, of course, the Marshall fire occurred, and then since then, you can see in 2023, 2024, and 2025, significant efforts. Part of that was the development of the Recovery and Resilience Division within the city, which Kiana Freeman is here tonight, so thank you, Kiana, for being here. I provided background slides and then also information, just kind of going through each of the resources. So Louisville has a continuity of operations plan dated 2009. So what is continuity of operations? It's really if, if something occurs, an emergency occurs, how is the city, the department's going to continue to provide services to the public? An emergency operations plan is from 2012. The emergency operations plan evaluates all hazards within the community. It also provides a continuity of government, and often it provides off-the-shelf proclamations that you can do to declare the emergency, and outlines the roles that individuals should play in addressing the emergency. In 2022, Boulder Hazard Mitigation Plan was adopted. There's a Louisville annex within the Boulder Hazard Mitigation Plan that identifies projects for, specific to Louisville. Again, in 2023, the establishment of the Recovery and Resilience Division. Also, there was in 2023, a wildfire hazard and risk assessment of public lands that was prepared on behalf of the city. This did focus on public lands, and this year, Louisville Fire Protection District is expanding that assessment to include all properties within Louisville. Boulder County's Community Wildfire Protection Plan was finalized in August 2024 and provides means for Boulder County to evaluate current conditions related to wildfire risks and hazards. Also, November 2024, council adopted the Fire Hardening Code. During 2023 and 2024, the city has done open space wildfire mitigation. There is a story map on the city's website that identifies that. One of the, some of the feedback that I've received is there's not a clear path of what the city's future goals are related to open space wildfire mitigation, so the public doesn't have a place to go to see what's the plan for 2025, 2026, and moving forward. In March 2025, council adopted or approved a contract with For's Marsh for wildfire mitigation campaign development contract. Also, there's an internal crisis communications plan, so this was most recently implemented when we had the power outage in downtown. You saw the team get together, they started putting information out related to social media, and so there's this internal plan that addresses how we will communicate. And then, as I mentioned, Louisville Fire Protection District has a contract with the Ember Alliance for a wildfire and conflagration risk assessment, which will look at the entirety of Louisville. And thank you to Chief Wilson for letting us participate in the scope of that. So in terms of breaking down the recommendation, so the recommendation is to initiate the discussions with Boulder ODM to join Boulder ODM. And so through an intergovernmental agreement, the County of Boulder and the City of Boulder have created this Boulder ODM, and I picked the key bullet points out of this, in which kind of the reasons why I, why I'm recommending that Louisville join Boulder ODM. So to prepare and keep current preparedness, mitigation, emergency operations, resource mobilization, hazard-specific disaster response and recovery plans consistent with the standard promulgated by the Colorado Office of Emergency Management, develop an ongoing risk, ongoing process of disaster risk assessment, prioritization of risk, action plan for risk reduction, after-action reporting process, improvement plan implementation, evaluation of results, coordinate disaster planning, training and education efforts, operate the Emergency Operations Center, and then seek to secure federal grant funding and programs for emergency management, programs, community preparedness, disaster response, mitigation, recovery, and manage federal grant funding and programs. When you look at the scope of these services, this is more than what one person can provide for the city of Louisville. This is this group's everyday job. They are the professionals at this. This would still, this does not mean that we would not need somebody on staff, because we would still need that liaison with Boulder ODM. But what it would do is make sure that we have training for staff, we have training for all of you in terms of what is your role during an emergency. We could do enhanced training with the community, and then also making sure that our documents, once completed, are kept up to date. And please interrupt me with questions at any time. So Boulder ODM currently does not have the staffing capacity to assist Louisville with the services noted. When I met with Director Chard, their plate is full in terms of their current scope of work. And what would be required to, for Louisville to join is we would need to work with the City of Boulder and County of Boulder to amend the IGA, and then also determine Louisville's cost share for this. And so it would most likely be a full-time equivalent staff person. That does not. That does not mean that there's a specific person dedicated to Louisville. It means that of all of their team, there's equivalent to a full-time person that would be dedicated to Louisville. And then we would have our share of overhead costs. In addition to this, I've had preliminary discussions with the city managers for Lafayette and for Superior. They have shown interest in perhaps joining Boulder ODM as well. And Boulder ODM, according to Mike Chard, is placing this on their June agenda to discuss the opportunity for Louisville and perhaps others to join long term. So shifting to the Emergency Operations Plan, as you can see through all of the documents and the studies and assessments, Louisville has a multitude of documents, but we don't have a current emergency operations plan. And when an emergency occurs, that's the document that I'm going to go to as the city manager. I'm going to pull the declaration out of there to declare an emergency, and then it also helps to define roles. It helps to define, you know, what our EOC would look like in coordinating with Boulder ODM, the continuity of government. If something happens with council members, what is the process to continue government? And then it's an all hazards plan. So it's not specific to, you know, one particular hazard. It's looking unfortunately, in Louisville, there's a variety of hazards that could occur. And so it's evaluating all of those. And it provides specific guidance as to what to do in that emergency situation. In addition to that, many of those studies and assessments have recommendations for mitigation measures or projects. It's difficult coming in as a new person to understand the variety of projects that have been recommended, their current status, what's been completed. And so as part of the scope of work, I would request that the consultant comb through all of those and prepare a comprehensive list, and then current status, and then also steps to move forward. Disaster Preparedness and Emergency Response is vital to the council's work plan as it supports all of council's priorities of economic vitality, safety, core services, and housing. At this point in time, fiscal impact funds are not currently budgeted to join Boulder ODM or hire a consultant to prepare an emergency operation plan. For Boulder ODM, you know, an equivalent full-time person plus the administrative costs, you're probably talking at least $200,000 for the emergency operations plan, and then going through that list. At this point in time, I don't have an estimate of what that would be, but that could potentially be, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars. However, there's a lot of agencies around us that have great emergency operations plans that we could potentially just use as a template and then update specific to Louisville. And that's really what we would request that the consultant do is don't start from scratch. Take something that works well now and update it for Louisville. So alternatives are to not initiate discussions with Boulder County and the City of Boulder to join Boulder ODM. If if council were to recommend going this direction instead, then what I would be requesting is then let's enhance the resources that we have on city staff to be able to enhance our emergency preparedness. And then also do not proceed with a request for proposals, hire a consultant to develop an emergency operations plan. Staff could pull some of these other emergency operations plans, update them for Louisville. I think the benefit of hiring a consultant to do that is, you know, this is something they would do on a regular basis. Those other emergency operations plans, I'm sure, are good, but maybe there's something specific to Louisville that we need to think about. And so it would be an opportunity to really be specific to Louisville. And then in terms of combing through the different documents and identifying the the projects, you know, in terms of capacity, it would be good to have a consultant do this because it's just, quite frankly, it's going to be done faster than if it were to be staffed, that does that. So the recommendation is for council to authorize the city manager to initiate discussions with Boulder County and the City of Boulder to join the Boulder Office of Disaster Management, and to develop a request for proposals, hire a consultant to prepare an emergency operations plan, and prioritize list of implementation measures. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, City Manager. I think I'm going to do something slightly different tonight. I think I'm going to hold the questions, I'm going to get the public comment, and then we can ask our questions after that, if that's okay. We'll see how that works tonight. So we get the public comment right out of the box. Do we have public comment? Figure, do we might?
First up is Larry Donner, followed by Joanne Spears.
Good evening. My name's Larry Donner. I live at 1020 Willow Place here in Louisville. After the Marshall Fire, you've heard me express concerns with regard to the city's ability to address not just wildfire, but any large-scale incident or disaster moving forward. I'm here tonight to voice my support for the city manager's recommendation to initiate discussions with Boulder County and the City of Boulder to join the Boulder Office of Disaster Management. The ODM can provide the depth of support necessary to fully sustain Louisville in the event of a future disaster. I further support the development of an emergency operations plan for the city. An EOP is essential to avoid a confused, disjointed response that can add to an adverse impact in event of a disaster. An effective EOP will help contain and minimize the impacts of an incident to better protect and defend our community. These two recommendations, if adopted by council, can only improve Louisville's ability to safeguard the city and the occupants in the event of future unanticipated disasters. So I want to thank you for what you've already done and for allowing me to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Next up is Joanne, followed by Tanya Samaru.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Spears, and I live in the enclave, which many of you know is right on Davidson Mesa. So we're really on the knife's edge of any, well, wildfire, but I understand this is for all disasters. And I can't thank the city manager enough for bringing what I believe essential to the safety of the residents, an emergency operations plan. I mean, we all know what happened in the Marshall Fire. And so if another disaster does occur, we don't want another, in my view, disaster during the evacuation that happened during the Marshall Fire. And so I'm here in support of both requests of City Manager Langley, and I hope and urge the city to council to please approve those requests.
Thank you, Joanne.
Next up is Tanya, followed by Lisa Hughes.
Hi, Tanya Samaru. So first, I really want to thank Diana Langley. Thank you so much. No person has done more for my mental health than our new city manager. So thank you so much for getting up to speed so quickly into making this a priority and for bringing this plan, this recommendation forward. I just want to say that everything she's recommended here is just the basic stuff required by the law, recommended by the federal government. FEMA recommends all cities do these things. You have an EOP, a COOP. You do threat and hazard, you know, analysis. You do these things. And this is not, this is just the basics, guys. So I have had, I was part of a group that the city was previously meeting with, and then they stopped those meetings, and we were discussing, you know, preparedness and things, and it sort of got further and further away. It went from us having monthly meetings to now only we'll answer a question if one of you send a question without multiple people on the email, and then we might just answer it to a website and not to you, and you're supposed to go to the website and read if we updated it. So we went a long ways from having public engagement to having none. And so because of that, I ended up digging into this and core requesting documents and talking to a lot of people, and what I can even the head of Department of Homeland Security in Colorado. And what I came up with is this, cities of 20,000 people don't do this well by themselves, ever, nobody. You're just outgunned. It takes a lot of resources. If you're lucky, you get one person who comes along and can organize everything, and council gets it, and they support it, and then the next council comes along, and the next staff, and it falls apart. The only way for us to stay on task and stay diligent is by doing what our city manager recommends, which is joining the ODM, because they have consistency, they have a board, and they are in lockstep with best practices. They are evolving constantly. They meet every month with partners. We meet with none. We don't meet with the Red Cross and, you know, all of these partners. We just can't provide the same services. People in Louisville deserve to get the same services that people in Boulder do, that people in unincorporated Boulder County do. We deserve the best. And it's, it's, it would, I mean, we don't have a million-dollar budget, or 1.2 million about, I think it's about what the ODM spends. You know, we're not going to spend the same, and we're not going to be able to have the same relationship with partners, because we don't have disaster after disaster that we respond to. It makes no sense for any city in our position to not go with option one. So I just want to say thank you so much, and I hope you take that into account moving forward as a resident who brought forth very reasonable, very reasonable concerns with other people. And it took three and a half years for us to have this concern at council, or to have this conversation. Accountability, keep that in mind. What is the path forward that gives our city accountability, that we're going to have consistency, that we're going to do something and stick with it? Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya.
Next up is Lisa Hughes.
Hi, thank you. I'm Lisa Hughes. I'm a resident of the Cornerstone neighborhood, and I would just also really like to thank City Manager Langley for all of her work on this and for meeting with us on her second week on the job. I am very supportive of everything she said, and I agree with everything else that's been said. I feel like an emergency operation plan is extremely important, and, you know, I too want to avoid some of the things that happened with that during the Marshall Fire, and I think everybody's learned lessons from that, and this is the time to move forward. I've also had the privilege of working with ODM on several occasions, and they're extremely professional. They are the experts. They know what they're doing. And as other people have mentioned, Louisville doesn't have the capacity to do this on their own, so there's no reason why we shouldn't take advantage of someone like Mike Chard, who is a well-respected expert in his field by many people and organizations, even outside of Boulder County and the state, to join ODM. And I also support the emergency operations plan, and I also support the hiring of the consultant, because I think it will make it easier for that person to call everything together and come up with a clear path forward. And I think I've also sent in comments on this, maybe so you don't need to hear anything else, but I also wanted to point out that in addition to all the other proclamations and things that are celebrated this month, this is also wildfire preparedness month. And I know we're talking about all disasters and hazards here, but I just want to point out that this seems like a timely time to move forward with this, given the fact that it is wildfire preparedness month as well. So I really hope that you'll support this. I realize there's a fiscal cost, but as the city manager said, there are grants and other opportunities available, I believe, from the county as well as other places to hopefully help pay for it, or, you know, I don't know, maybe there's other ways to do it. But I think it's extremely important, and I think it needs to be moved forward, and that, you know, it will take the burden off of a lot of people on city staff, as well as just make residents feel safer. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Any other comments? Okay, good. Thank you for the comments by the people who have chimed in here. Why don't we start on council with questions? I want to sort of reemphasize something that we've, I think, the city manager mentioned, but the the request or the recommendation, I should say, not the request, but the recommendation is to do two things, initiating discussions with Boulder County and the City of Boulder to join the Boulder Office of Disaster Management, BDM, and to develop a request for proposal to hire a consultant to prepare an emergency operations plan, prioritize list of implementation measures. So with that in mind, and obviously there are alternatives that are there as well in the slides and that she discussed. So with that, questions for staff? Yes?
I have one question, and that's that we do have to negotiate with Boulder County and Boulder in order to join the ODM. What happens if they say no?
So if, I hear some yelling out there. So with, you know, with the discussion with Director Chard, you know, and then also the discussion with Sheriff Johnson, you know, I think that if Louisville is willing to pay its share, then, you know, I think that they were hopeful that Louisville could join Boulder ODM. I think the other question would be if other agencies such as Superior and Lafayette want to join. And I asked the question, well, would one full-time equivalent cover all three agencies? And the responses would be one full-time equivalent for Louisville specifically. And so, you know, with those discussions, I'm hopeful that we would be able to, but it would really come down to what would Louisville's financial portion be associated to join. But that's where, you know, we would need to come forward to council and provide that information. And I also think it's important, when they have their board meeting in June, that, you know, we attend to understand what the discussion is, because they're talking about expanding it to include other agencies.
Would you want us to attend that also, or just staff?
We would need to make sure that we then that we don't have a majority of council there, but I would leave that open to council, but staff will definitely attend.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Kern.
Thank you. Thank you for all the information. This has really been fantastic. What do you think the timeline is for for both with ODM? Obviously, it's still up in the air, but since you talked with Director Chard, and also with our consultants, how quickly do you think they would be able to activate something?
So with Director Chard, you know, negotiating an intergovernmental agreement is not a fast process. And so that's why I'm recommending that we move forward with a preparation of emergency operations plan now, because it could take a while to actually be able to join Boulder ODM, not only from the IGA perspective, but then also getting the funds into the budget to be able to join. And they'd probably want to have it associated with some type of logical, whether it's a, you know, budget year. And so that's why, that that's to be determined, but it could be a year or so for that process. In terms of the request for proposals, you know, we need to develop the scope of work, develop the request for proposals, post it, obtain proposals, review them, and then make a recommendation to council, then actually do the work. And so that process is going to take a few months to go through that.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Hefner.
Yeah, thank you. You mentioned as part of this, the sort of combing through of various other efforts that are in progress or maybe are completed. Are there sort of other planning documents that you considered as part of this proposal that we should really think about doing in the near term in addition to the EOP?
So the EOP is going to also include a continuity of operations plan. That would be a portion of the EOP. And so as noted, that's kind of like the baseline of what we need, and that's, in discussing with Director Chard, getting that in place while we're waiting to join Boulder ODM. And then once we join Boulder ODM, then we can do an assessment if there's more that needs to be updated to include Louisville. But getting the EOP that would include the the coop would be the starting point. Also, it's going to be important to get the updated wildfire risk and conflagration assessment from Louisville Fire Protection District to understand and get the updated mapping and of how, you know, in different wildfire scenarios, how that could impact Louisville, because that would need to be incorporated into the hazard assessment as well.
Great. Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Cooperman.
First, I'd just like to thank you for bringing this forward, even though you've only been with the city for several weeks. Look, a few questions. So one of them, the city commissioned this emergency improvement plan in 2023 or something like that. And I'm just kind of curious about, you know, do we have a sense for how that might overlap with what we would want a consultant to deliver?
My understanding is the outcome of the emergency improvement plan was to develop the Recovery and Resilience Division within the city, which so that's been completed. I think at this point, because I think at this point, because of the status of the current recovery effort, it's time to discuss what is the next step for that division. And so, you know, I really think that that portion has been addressed. It's really evaluating these other documents, the multi-hazard mitigation plan, the wildfire risk assessment, that, all of these other documents that have recommendations for projects, and evaluating those projects, evaluating potential funding sources, and looking at how they align with our priorities, so that we can develop a comprehensive plan as to how to move forward, not only in joining Boulder ODM, preparing the emergency operations plan, but then also which projects do we want to pursue, and how do we go about funding them? Because as noted, there is funding that's out there through various programs, and part of that would be for the consultant to provide recommendations as to potential funding that we could pursue.
Okay. And then another question, which builds a little bit on Councilmember Heffner's question. When I spoke with Mike Chard, he also talked about a recovery plan.
Yes.
Being a state requirement. He said there are, there are not that many, sort of, there isn't much structure that's sort of required of it, but that it is a requirement. So I'm wondering, would that be in the mix somewhere?
So if you notice, my recommendation is to join Boulder ODM to oversee the delivery of disaster management and recovery services. So the intent would be that Boulder ODM assists us with the recovery services.
Okay. And then one last question. You know, I think one of the issues has been that some of this information is not sort of public-facing enough, and I'm wondering if we do hire a consultant to do this kind of work, would we ask the consultant to develop any sort of public-facing materials, or would we do that in-house, or how that might work?
So with the Forest Marsh contract that council awarded earlier this year, it was going to focus on doing outreach related to the results of the city's wildfire risk assessment and working with Kiana. She's working with Forest Marsh to basically kind of split that scope of work. So we do some initial outreach related to information that we have, and then we do additional outreach once we have the Louisville Fire Protection District assessment, so, because that would be more targeted to residents and their concerns. And so, you know, outreach and the public-facing information is definitely a priority for us. And then part of the city's overall plan is to update our website. And so through the update of the website, that would also provide a better opportunity to have these documents in a location that are easy to find, and then also information that's easy to understand.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Other questions? Just a second. Just going to make sure we get through the whole crowd before we go back. Do you have any quick, okay. Councilmember Fay.
Okay. I was just wondering, I know that you've contacted the fire department and are cooperating with them and getting information and giving information. How involved is our police department also with communicating to the public and participating in the recovery, and, or not so much the recovery as the emergency evacuation process?
Yes, thank you for that question. So last week, Superior Town Council meeting, there was a presentation related to evacuation routes, their emergency preparedness, and it was interesting in that the information that was, that was relayed related to evacuation, the chief has a similar plan, it's just not that it's public-facing. And so that's one of the things that we've talked about, is, you know, as a city, we can do a better job of putting out there the things that we are doing, what the chief's philosophy is related to evacuation routes, so that the public understands. And so yes, evacuation routes is definitely a topic. Chief does have a strategy related to evacuation routes of not only who can declare and determine that an area should be evacuated, flexibility to, rather than having a set evacuation route, because depending upon the location of the emergency or the type of emergency, it needs to be very flexible. And so he has kind of standard protocol in place as to, that provides staff that flexibility to make those calls, so that it can be implemented. But with that said, we can do a better job of documenting that and then providing that to the public.
I have a few questions myself. Just to understand the, what we're, what we're sort of driving for, or maybe what BDM is asking us to provide. They're asking us to fund a position within, within the organization, their organization.
Yes.
Is that right? As opposed to an employee of Louisville who's then sort of seconded to that agency?
Correct. And the reason is because of their current, with, with how they do their allocation of workload, that's why it wouldn't be a person that's specific to Louisville. It would be all of the employees would be able to work on Louisville-specific items, because each of those employees have different areas of expertise, and so we would get the benefit of all of those employees, but we're essentially paying for one.
Yeah. And I get that. I just wanted to make sure that that was what it was about. Has there been any thought, this may be jumping ahead a bit, but has there been any thought about requesting a board position?
That would be something that would be negotiated through the IGA, and whether or not would it be the police chief that's on the board? Because if you notice, it's police, fire, and then the city manager and the county administrator. And so that would be negotiated through the IGA as to who sits on the board, if the city would have a seat on the board, and, you know, how votes would count, that type of thing.
Good, and thank you for that. I don't think we really talked too much about this, except to say that they're asking us to do one FTE for Louisville-related work. But do you know what other communities, the other communities, Superior, Lafayette, are planning to do or thinking about doing in this regard?
No, when I initially approached the city managers for both, they showed general interest in at least having the discussions. I don't know that they've gotten into the details with Director Chard in terms of what would be requested specifically of those agencies. With Superior, they already contract with the sheriff's office for law enforcement services, so theirs might look different than ours.
Sure.
Other comments that I've received is, well, if we have an emergency, Boulder ODM's just going to help us. So why are we going to pay for an additional person? These are services outside of that initial emergency response. This is, these are services that set us up so that we can, as a city, effectively respond with the assistance of Boulder ODM for some of those other services, but it's not just taking for granted, and it's not receiving the same level of services that the county of Boulder and the city of Boulder are receiving through this IGA.
Good. Thank you. That's just what I needed to know. Other questions? Yeah, Councilmember Cooperman.
Just to clarify that sort of last remark, I mean, when the ODM does respond to something in Louisville, as I understand, at the end of the day, we do have to sort of pay them for their services, even when we're not, you know, when we haven't been under contract with them.
So that would be, that would be a different service than what we're requesting as part of this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
I think for some agencies, they just take for granted that Boulder ODM's going to come in and take care of it. And they will come in and help, but like you said, you're going to be paying for it at some point in time. We're requesting additional services so that we are better prepared to respond to the emergencies.
Just because it's not in the pack, I think you mentioned a couple of numbers, but, you know, total for both, like what, you know, this isn't budgeted currently.
Correct.
What is the total budget impact for, you know, I don't care about 2025, because, you know, in discussion, part year, but like 2026, what is the total fiscal impact for us going forward?
So long-term, we would estimate maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars for Boulder ODM. The preparation of the emergency operations plan would be a one-time cost, and I'm just giving you a rough number of a couple hundred thousand dollars, just to estimate on the higher end of that. It could be, you know, significantly less than that, but...
But annually?
Annually, $200,000 per year, plus escalation costs, potentially.
Right. Yeah, it's just, like, I understand the idea of, you know, we aren't funding an actual human, right, but more a full-time equivalent. I'm curious, you know, if they'll, you know, actually hire another person, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then, like, if Superior and Lafayette both did the same thing we did, actually going to hire three, because you're saying, what you're saying is, they're not actually hiring a person for Louisville, they're going to, you know, have their whole staff work on Louisville, their whole staff work on Superior, their whole staff work on Lafayette, but they're going to hire three. So is that where it could potentially, they might end up only hiring one or two people to service these three new communities, and we may not, may not in the end, depending on what happens, we may not have to pay for an entire person, we might pay two-thirds of a person.
There's the, there's the potential for that. So according to Director Chard, his current staffing level does not have capacity to take on Louisville. If it were Louisville alone, that would be one full-time equivalent position. If it were Superior and Lafayette, you know, I didn't check with him if that would be two full-time equivalents, if it would be three, but it would be more than what he has today. If Louis, if Lafayette and Superior were not to join, he would be hiring an additional person to address Louisville's needs, because his current staffing does not have the capacity to take on Louisville at all.
Yeah. And I'm not trying to play games, like, well, let's wait until they, you know, Superior and Lafayette do it, and then maybe we can get in for free. I'm not trying to play those games, but just curious, you know, if there is, you know, room for that sort of negotiation depending on others, and I would, I would hope that we're trying to collaborate. It would seem that if Superior, Lafayette, and Louisville all came at the same time.
Right.
Made the request together to all be covered at the same time, then maybe it would be one and a half FTEs or two FTEs, and we'd all save a little money. So I assume that'll be part of this. We're not approving today an amount. We're approving, you know, you to...
Just initiate it, yes.
Exactly. So I'm super comfortable with it, and generally speaking, you know, I think this is right at the heart of our core services, you know, providing core services, you know, safety and, and emergency preparedness. So I think, you know, while this could be a significant budget impact on, you know, a community that has a pretty tight budget right now, this seems like the kind of thing that, you know, we, we need to be, you know, finding the funds for. I think our community is, is pretty clear, this is something that's crucial and important. So generally speaking, I'm in, I'm in favor of this direction, and I'll be curious to see what the, the actual dollar costs are and where we're, where we're finding that money, and, you know, if we're taking it from something, or we've got more revenue, or, or if we're having to cut, you know, other things in order to do this. But just, just weighing that reality. But, but generally, I'm in support of it.
Thanks, Member Tem. All right. Other comments? Yes. Councilmember Heffner.
Yeah, thanks. I mean, I think this is in the category of no-brainers, or things we should have done long ago, or pick one, but I'm very pleased we're doing it now. Everything in the proposal makes tremendous sense to me. The, the two areas I want to keep my eye on are the one raised by the mayor, which is what is the governance structure, and how do we make sure we have a seat at the board table? And, you know, if it's, if it's us and Lafayette and Superior, how do, how do we sort of figure out the overall board composition in a way that's fair, especially given that Boulder has a few seats all on its own? And I'm sure that'll all get worked out. And then the second piece is the mayor pro tem's piece about just making sure we have the money to do this, and I, you know, I'm sure as it moves forward, we'll be looking for ways to try and limit the budget impact and, you know, look, look for things that, you know, maybe the city has been trying to do, or the city has been spending money on, that now we can avoid by handing off to ODM.
Thanks. Yes, Councilmember Kern.
Thank you. I do feel, clearly I do, that this is very long-awaited, and I'll just add to a lot of the public thanks to you, Diana, that what you've done coming in the door and in a month, trying, achieving what many of us have been working on for two years, and I personally, a full year ago this time, was having these conversations with ODM, and here we are finally now, so I can't thank you enough for putting us on the right path to a much safer Louisville. And I'd like to add to not only the, the budget component and a seat at the table, but as a permanency to this, so that we don't have issues perhaps a few years down the road. There's, you know, elected changes, there's other changes, and that all of a sudden, this is now not going to be funded. I would like to find a way to make sure that we know, long-term, that the city is going to be protected.
Thanks. Anyone else? Were their hands up over here, or no? Go ahead, Councilmember Cooper.
I won't reiterate what everyone else just said. Very much in agreement with my fellow council members. I guess my only, my only concern, or, I mean, it's not really a concern, but in terms of hiring a consultant, I do think that is probably the best course of action. I just feel a little bit like, like this is something we should have done in-house or could have done in-house, and, you know, now we're going to go out and hire a consultant to do it. So I don't know, that's just a feeling I have about it, but that's all. Thank you.
Just got a few points to make. Like others, I think this is a central core of what governments do, is to protect their citizens, and protecting your citizens is partly trying to get them prepared for a whole host of different problems. And obviously, the Marshall Fire is very much on our minds in this, but that's not the only thing. That's, Mike Chard and the crew at ODM is, are just fantastic at the whole range of disaster, planning, management, recovery, preparedness. They're just super. And I have been hoping for this day to come for quite some time, and I've talked with the sheriff about it several months ago, and actually longer ago than that. And I think that it's going to do wonders for our city to be a part of ODM. And I, and I think, you know, the, I get that the ODM doesn't have the capacity without our help to cover us, that that's only fair, that we bear our burden, although well-negotiated, so we, it's a fair, a fair share of that. And they have the expertise that's just worlds beyond what we, what we could have, because I think Samaru mentioned before, that it's very hard for small cities to just be in a position where they can do this stuff. And I think that's the in-house piece for the consulting. A portion of the request or the recommendation, I think we just need some, somebody to help with, with the EOP. And the fact that, I mean, it just pains me that the EOP is from 2012. I think all of us are feeling that and the pressure to move, you know, it's past time. And I'm really glad we're, we're moving forward. And the second is, you know, the reset that this implies. I think it's a reset, because you're here, city manager, and I think you're, you're going to be a big asset in not just the negotiation, but moving forward in all of this. I think, you know, when, when we were in the process, just to digress just a little, when we were in the process of hiring, recruiting and hiring you, certainly one of the things that was in my mind was some understanding and appreciation. was some understanding and appreciation for the disasters that we've had here. We've had a number of disasters. I feel like I'm a disaster councilperson and mayor because I've had, we had the 2013 flood, and we had the, you know, we had the pandemic, and we had the fire. And it's just like, you know, we have these things that are coming up, and this is going to be a really good step forward. But we needed somebody to help with that. And I want to give you kudos for this presentation and for the work that you've done before and the experience and knowledge that you bring to us. That's going to be very, very helpful. And I don't know whether people, our residents, necessarily appreciate that about you and the background that you've had in Yuba City beforehand. And you've got experience doing these sorts of plans. And I really value your recommendations here. And I can't think of a better person to be in that seat because we've been focusing on the projects themselves, but it's authorizing the city manager to do this. And you're the right person to do it. So I'm very comfortable with both. I want to maybe emphasize, I think we, it would be good to see what we can do about board membership, however that comes up. I think getting that seat at the table will be helpful, both for them and for us. And, yeah. And the only other thing is something wasn't mentioned too much, but I think understanding what ODM is going to provide us in the way of regular information provided to council, regular information provided to the community, that would be very helpful. I mean, given that the person is not going to be our employee, we can't direct them to just, you know, give us an update and stuff. But I, I would expect that there'll be at least some obligation or some negotiated position to allow us to get that information without having to work too hard for it. But I guess what I would ask is, do you have the necessary direction that you need?
I do. And I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the department heads, acknowledge Kiana, you know. So I'm the person that comes here and brings us together. But for the last year, there have been a lot of people behind the scenes that have been moving the city forward and trying to get us to this point. And so to acknowledge all of their efforts and to acknowledge your efforts as well, and just also the appreciation of the feedback from the community. This really is a group effort. I might be the face of it right now, but that's all, there's a lot of people behind this, and there'll be a lot of people in terms of moving this forward. And so I want to make sure that due credit is given where it should be given. And so thank you.
Appreciate that. All right. Unless there's anything, something else about that? I think we are moving on to the city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report this evening.
Okay. Does anyone in council have or want to identify any future agenda items? Okay, hearing none. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you all.